Welcome to the special meeting Tuesday, December ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. Roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Gilman.
Here.
Mayor Protam Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Rule.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember May.
Here.
Thank you. And will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor Honorable Council, please rise, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I have an approval of the agenda, please?
I'll move approval. I'll second.
Second. Any objections? Thank you. And I will take public comments on our closed session item. I have one from Mr. Larry Steingold.
Imagine that.
Glad you're here.
Thank you. Well, I'm glad I'm here, too.
Keeping the universe in order.
Well, the goal is to get older and age well, right? This is one of the reasons. Regarding the property negotiation on the land with the nine that had was previously approved for nine houses or units, what are we going to do with it? If we're going to go into the housing business, are we going to help somebody build units? Are they going to be workforce housing? What is the cost to this project? I don't know what they're asking, but it's been laying there for three or four years. And as a former real estate broker, I would think the guy is, the owners are very hungry to get out. So there may be an opportunity for a whole host of reasons. I mean, site work's been done to some extent. But what? I mean, nine units, are we gonna help? Are we gonna loan money to somebody to build them? Are we gonna finance them? We're gonna find a grant? Are we gonna end up managing them? What is, why? The house, the property next door? Opportunity, maybe it's a tear down, maybe it isn't. I don't know. Part of the green, part of the eight acres. Maybe it's payback for the pickleball. I don't know. But whatever it is, it's a reason to do that. But the other nine units? That was a location for the Van Light property, I guess that was one of them. But those nine units that there, they're what, two, three bedrooms each? Could that become a thirty-unit apartment house for these people? For our new residents? Because that's what we're building, an apartment house that has assisted living. But, but the property is something that we can look at. Just want to know why and what for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steingold. Anything online?
No, Mayor, we currently have no Zoom attendees.
Wonderful. So we'll move into the closed session. Thank you. Are you ready to go? Welcome back, everyone. Ms. Burgess, would you please report out of the closed session?
Yes. In the closed session, council provided direction to staff to bring additional information back to council needed to evaluate pricing and payment terms for one of the two properties included on the agenda.
Thank you very much. And now we'll move on to presentations, starting with the Kroll LLC presentation. Forensic review, Mr. Harvey, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to turn things over to Ms. Cho, who will also turn things over to a representative from Kroll, who she will introduce, Ms. Cho.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Tonight, we have three presentations on the agenda. But before I introduce our first speaker, I'd like to give acknowledgement and special thanks to Chrissy Billings, Norma Cervantes, and the finance team who are also here. Noe, I'm so sorry, Noe. Noe Von Kamchan and Scott Avila and Leah Palmer for all the work that they've done this past year. Ms. Billings has played an instrumental part and has taken the lead in improving finance processes and policies, which you will hear about later in tonight's presentation. And so without further ado, the first presentation will be provided by Sherina Abadi from Kroll. Ms. Abadi is the Managing Director of Investigations, Disputes, and Compliance, and she'll be presenting the results of the city's targeted forensic audit.
Honorable council members, thank you for having me tonight. I'm just gonna go through what we're calling a targeted forensic review, and I'll explain why we're calling it that. And can I scroll it, or can someone cycle through?
Sorry about that.
Yeah. No, no. Great. As mentioned, I'm Sherina Abadi. I'm a managing director at Kroll. I've been with Kroll for just over six years. I help. No. I help run our forensic investigations practice, which includes doing investigations into suspected financial misconduct and also doing proactive assessments of such potential misconduct that could happen at some point in time. So we were contacted by the city of Ohio. I'm just gonna give you a level set for what we're gonna talk about tonight. A little introduction of how we got here, what we did and what we found by level, and then some observations and recommendations that we had for the city, which probably will be a consistent theme in my presentation and the one after. So just a little introduction, this is what we did. So when the city came to us, as you probably all know, there was a press release by the LA County DA's office about Carl Alameda, who's the former Assistant City Manager for the city. And in that press release, the District Attorney's Office had charged or indicted Mr. Alameda with embezzlement and insurance fraud. And that was for conduct that happened when he was at the city of La Cuenada, so prior to coming to Ohio. However, he'd been in Ohio by then for just over two years. They had, as soon as they learned about this, they had put him on leave and terminated him the next day. There were obvious concerns that maybe he had continued his alleged misconduct while he was here at the city, and they wanted to ensure that at least they would know if such a thing happened and also, at the same time, be able to review some of these processes and procedures to prevent that from happening in the future and/or at least be able to easily detect it. So that was why they reached out to us in the first place. And when we initially spoke, there had been some initial review that had been done. So a review of bank accounts and I think of credit card statements without any substantive findings. And so there was little concern that, in fact, Mr. Alameda had been involved in misconduct. However, to make sure, they wanted us to do what we call a high-level review, right? And so that was what our phase one was. It's sort of a targeted initial review where we would request certain documentation, policies, procedures, some financial records, bank accounts, credit card statements, and take a very high-level look to see if anything was anomalous, if there was anything that gave us, you know, suspicion and made us maybe want to dig deeper. We'd also conduct a number of what we call informational interviews, just to understand how things work within the city so that we could identify where there were potentially gaps or weaknesses in these processes and dig deeper in those areas, as they would be the most likely to be exploited. So we conducted that phase, and then we did identify certain weaknesses, certain areas that would be low-hanging fruit for someone were they to have the intent to embezzle money. And that led us to sort of Phase 1A and what we called Phase 2. So with Phase 1A, we actually searched Mr. Alameda's office. We did a targeted review of emails that were preserved, and we requested some additional documentation and did some additional interviews. Then we targeted certain revenue streams. So I'll give you kind of a high level of how embezzlement generally works. There's two primary ways people embezzle money. One of them is diverting revenue that's coming to the city or business, right? So if someone's paying the city or the business for something, you divert that before it ever hits the city's books, and you put it into an account that you control. The second way is to have unauthorized expenses. So money's paid from the city, and instead of it going to an intended business purpose, it goes to something for your personal benefit. These are really broad overviews, but essentially the incoming and the outgoing are how you get the money. There are a number of ways that you can do these, some of them easier than others. And in order to sort of pinpoint what way Mr. Allen may have used, we needed to understand how the city worked. Once we understood that sort of broad overview, there were several revenue streams, but also several expenditures, like expense accounts that we thought were going to be the most likely that he would have used. And so we dug a little bit deeper in those specific areas and tried to do a more thoughtful review, take a larger sample size, and identify if there was anything to give us pause. That was Phase 2. And then in Phase 3 was really our reporting and briefing, and there was some iteration in that. There was some loose ends. We had to tie up, speak to a few additional people, et cetera.
Very quick question. Would you like to wait for questions at the end? Or would you like us, if there are questions, come up to ask in real time?
I will take your question whenever you'd like.
Just when did that investigation? Can you give us the timeframe that you did that?
I can.
Oh, there it is. Never mind.
Slide for that.
Okay, thanks.
So July tenth was when Carl Alameda was hired as Assistant City Manager here in Ohio. So he worked here. There was a period of time where he was actually the assistant city manager before Mr. Harvey was hired, and that was a few-month-long period. May fifteenth was when the press release came out about the indictment, and that's when Mr. Alameda left the city for the last time. That was the last time he was physically here. He was put on leave that day. He was terminated the next day. May twentieth is when we were hired. So that's when we were brought on initially, or when the initial phone call happened about us coming in to do a review. There was a period of onboarding that occurred after that where we fleshed out what the scope would be and budget and things like that. That answer the question?
It's gonna point more towards, you have probably found things that I'm going to guess have, there's been some corrections since your investigation?
Ah, yes.
But that, we'll discuss that later.
Yeah, absolutely. So in some of our recommendations, we are aware that the city's already taken steps, and we're already taking steps when we were conducting our review to remedy some of the weaknesses that we identified.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah. So I'm gonna give you a really sort of high-level overview of our findings. Not to bury the lead, we did not find any direct evidence that Carl Alameda embezzled or otherwise was engaged in financial misconduct while here at the city. That, there's a period on the end of that. There is, however, a caveat. There is, however, some caveats, and I'm gonna go through those. I'm gonna go through sort of the buckets of things that we did and talk to you about why there are those caveats that make it difficult for us to say that he did not do it. I can say that I found no evidence of it. It's hard for me to say he did not do it. We talked to thirteen different people across various functions within the city. And again, part of those were to understand how the city operates, and part of them were to drill down on very specific things that we identified as, like I said, low-hanging fruit or the places that would be most likely for him to target. And the purpose of doing those interviews was really just to understand what gaps were actually happening, how the workflow occurred, how we could potentially identify whether or not something was occurring within those revenue accounts or expense accounts. We talked to those people. Nothing came up that would give us direct evidence that Carl Alameda was involved in misconduct. Nobody said, oh, yeah, he took a check, or, you know, oh, he had an account that, you know, he was directing checks to, or he demanded this money to be paid to him instead of to the city. And I'll just pause there and give you a little bit of an overview of what he's alleged to have done at La Cuenada and the method that he used there, because it's relevant for our purposes. So essentially, they found that he was making demands to third-party insurers to pay for claims of damage to city property. So for example, someone runs into a stop sign, there's damage to city property. That individual, whoever the responsible party is, whether it's that individual or their insurer, he would submit demands to them to pay for the expenses, the cost, the labor, the material to cover that property damage. And then he would direct them to make these payments to an account that he controlled. It's a decently clever scheme. It's hard to detect because that's not what we call expected income. It's unexpected income. You don't know that you're going to receive it, therefore you don't miss it when it doesn't hit your account. And since he had sort of independent control of this, no one really knew he was doing it. And frankly, probably no one was really looking at it. When they did their investigation, at least from the public findings that I can look at, it appears that the only way that it was detected was one of the correspondents went to a different party. And that different party saw that correspondence, was like, what is this? Started digging deeper and unraveled the scheme. Then they did an investigation, and they found a lot more evidence. And so since that was the sort of modus operandi that he used at La Cuenada, we thought it may have been similar to what he had done here, if he did anything. So we were particular to look at ways in which he could have demanded payment from third parties without the city knowing it. As you can imagine, we talked to people from Public Works, from policing. I mean, those would be the most likely to know when there was damage done to city property. You know, the city of Ohio has assessments on short-term rentals. That could be somewhere where he can make demands, and nobody might know about that because they didn't know there was an offending party to begin with, right? So we looked at, you know, City Hall, which was handling some of the short-term rental assessment tracking. We looked at transit, right? Because think of trolley fees and recreation and some of the cash that comes into the city. That's somewhere that can easily be diverted because you don't know it's coming, right? So that's why we talked to people from these various departments. And in our interviews, again, we learned that there were a lot of weaknesses. And some of them are purely from the workflow. And what I mean by that is there's a lot of paper processes here in the city. And so it was difficult to even track whether or not something had happened because there was no, there was literally a paper trail, but not a digital one. And so, again, we found no evidence that he did anything wrong. However, there were a lot of questions, sort of like open gaps that were still in our minds. So we did conduct a search of his office. His office had not been entered, as I mentioned, since he left the morning of the fifteenth. He had not come back. However, we had learned from a number of people that had seen him that day that he walked out with a very large bag that may have had documents in it. And when we searched his office, there were virtually no documents in his office. Very, very few, like, stack of that big. Which begs the question, you know, did he, in fact, take documents with him? And if he did, why? And what did he take? And since they are paper, it's very difficult to know what he took. So again, no evidence from anything that we found in his office. We sort of ran down every lead of documents that we found in his office, and there was no evidence of misconduct. But the question being, what did he take that we don't know about? We did do a targeted search of his emails, and I'll, again, caveat that. So the way that digital records work, I mean, you're on a Microsoft Office 365 system here. There's certain logging that occurs within that, and so that you can do an audit of activity, whether or not someone accessed something, deleted something, modified something, exfiltrated something. All of those are ad informations contained in digital logs. But the license that the city had only defaulted to a seven-day log. So that was not particularly useful because we no longer had that digital evidence to go back in time and see what was done. But we did have his emails, and there were quite a few emails, many tens of thousands of emails. So we looked at his inbox, his sent, his drafts, his outbox. We looked at all of the various records that were maintained in his email account. And we found, we did targeted searches. We didn't look at every single email, fear not. But we searched on every possible key word or phrase we could think of, and we found no evidence that he was involved in misconduct in his emails. When he was at the city of La Cuenada, to give you an example, the way he sent the demands to these third-party insurers was often from his work email. As you can imagine, that would be a normal way to send such a thing, right? In some instances, he faxed it, but in other instances, he emailed it. Alleged to have, to be clear. He has not been convicted yet. So we did look for things like that, right? Was he sending any demands? Was he requesting money from people? Was he communicating with insurance companies, whatnot? We did not find any evidence of that. So the next thing we did was look at certain accounts payable and accounts receivable processes, right? How does the city process revenue, and how do they process expenses? How are they recording that? How are they auditing it? How are they reconciling it and things like that? We did find a number of weaknesses in this system. There was some inconsistencies in the way that the city was reporting revenue and expenses. There were some inconsistencies with how they were tracking certain accounts to know whether or not, you know, you had spent as much as you were getting in. And I'll give you an example. For example, when you get a grant, you get X amount of money. Most grants are reimbursable. You track your expenses against that grant so that you can get repaid. While the expenses were being tracked in one account, and the revenue's being tracked in another, and there was really no easy way to reconcile the two without a copious amount of work. We found that a few different times, as I mentioned, with short-term rentals. We found that, you know, there were some tracking of short-term rental assessments that were being levied on various offending property owners. There were some tracking of payments that were made against those assessments. But it wasn't consistent, and we weren't able to reconcile the records that we did have. So there were some gaps in that. We found that, you know, by and large, a lot of these gaps were due to understaffing. I mean, there was what we call like a division of responsibilities in the finance function that you want to see. You don't want the same people doing the same things or having one person taking all tasks in a certain work stream. And the reason for that is because if they are a bad actor, there's no one to check and balance that, right? But there was very few people. There was a lot of high turnover in finance. And frankly, there wasn't enough staff, and there wasn't enough trained staff, and there wasn't enough consistency across staff to have the sort of division of responsibilities you'd like to see. We understand that that has currently been rectified and being rectified, which is good to see. We looked at departmental revenues. So there were certain revenue streams, like I said, one of the ways to embezzle, right, is to spend money on things that are not, in fact, authorized expenses. So we looked at some of the most obvious things, like transit was one that we looked at. For example, when we searched Mr. Alameda's office, we found what appeared to be an invoice for the repair of two engines and two transmissions on two trolleys. But we couldn't find any record that they had actually been repaired. And we couldn't find any record of the expense that followed these invoices. So it was very confusing, and the invoices weren't exactly sufficient support for such an expense. One of them was actually, quote, it wasn't an invoice. And on one of them, there was the handwriting of the additional second trolley, right? So those are things you don't want to see when you're looking at support for a payment. But in the end, we were able to track that down, and in fact, those trolleys were not repaired, and no money was spent on that repair. But that was one of the things that we looked at to make sure. Special events was another one. As you probably know, when someone holds an event in the city, they are levied a certain amount for security or extra police presence and things like that. We found that there was cost being incurred by the city for that security presence. But we did not consistently find that that was being recuperated, right? So we thought, well, maybe he's demanding that from this, you know, event holder, and we don't know it. But we've since learned that that has actually been rectified as well. They've identified all of the times that it either wasn't recuperated and since recuperated or found where it was in the account where it had been recuperated, right? So it was a matter of just figuring out where it was being recorded and sorting it out in the end. But those were some of the things that we took a look at. And we also looked at the obvious things, bank accounts and credit cards, right? We learned that at, when Mr. Alameda was the interim city manager, that he, in fact, had signature authority over bank accounts and that he had moved the city's bank accounts from one bank to another. So for example, that would have been a great opportunity for him to maybe open a bank account in a name very similar to the city and divert checks that are supposed to be deposited to the city's account into that account that he controlled. We found no evidence of that. So those are some of the places that we looked and some of the findings that we had.
Can I ask one quick question? With the finances with money coming in, because he was in charge of the ERF grant for the unhoused. So did you check all of that accounting out?
Yeah, so grant accounting was one of the areas that was probably the most difficult for us. As I mentioned, I think earlier, the way that grants were tracked didn't allow for easy reconciliation. The unhoused grant was not the one that we were particularly concerned about. There were some others that had less robust accounting. That one appeared to be in line. What we do is we take a sample. We don't look at every single expense and every revenue. That would just be an exhaustive effort that would cost a lot of money. So we did take a sample, and we felt confident with that sample that there was nothing missing from that particular one. So this, and these are some of the caveats that I've sort of talked about, just to put them on paper. You know, the three basic areas are controls, people, and evidence, right? That can be improved upon. And when we talk about controls, we're talking about having the right policies in place, like actually written policies. This is how we do things. This is how we process, you know, when a check comes into the city, this is what we do. Step one, step two, step three, and having it written out. That's policies, and processes are defined in those policies. But then you actually have to have implementation of that. And then you have to have some means of ensuring that is being implemented, right? So it's like anything, you can write whatever law you want, but if you're not then, making sure that people are abiding by it, what's, what good is that down on piece paper? And so record-keeping was probably the largest hurdle, I think, to the city understanding whether or not it was adhering to the policies and the procedures it had set up. And the reason for that is because it's difficult to audit when your record-keeping is not clean, right? It takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of effort. It takes a lot of manpower. And frankly, things just get kind of messy. And the more messy things get, right, the less confidence you have in what's going on. And so we understand that all of that is being rectified and has been being rectified over the course of the last six months that we've been working on that. The weak financial controls actually goes to the policies, right? There were certain things that the city didn't really have established policies or procedures for. And I'll give you, you know, an example of one of those. It was vendor management. So one of the easiest ways to divert money from the city in the form of expenses being paid for non-business-related items is to set up a fake vendor, right? You establish a vendor, ABC Electronics. ABC Electronics submits invoice to the city for whatever good or service that they provided, and then they get paid. But in fact, ABC Electronics is controlled by Carl Alameda, right? So really easy way to do it, super low-hanging fruit. And one way to counter that is to have really good, robust vendor management, right? So when you onboard vendors, you have sort of checks and balances to ensure they are who they say they are, that they are an established business, that they do what they say that they do, that they're owned and operated by the people that they say they're owned and operated by. And then you cross-check the vendor information with, you cross-check the vendor information with your employee list. Do they have any addresses in common? Do they have any relatives in common? Are their phone numbers the same? Are they banking at the same, you know, account number, things like that? And we found that that really wasn't happening, right? So it was a super easy, low-hanging fruit, had he wanted to do it. We did take a look, just to settle the nerves, we did take a look at the vendors. We took a pretty robust sample of thirty percent, and we did that process. We did not identify any concerning vendors. Again, we took a thirty percent sample. It's a good sample, but it's not entirety. So again, we understand that that process is now being implemented, and that is being rectified. When we talk about people, I mean, generally, people are, they sort of fit into two buckets. Sometimes they are bad actors, and sometimes, and this is a term that is not my term, they are helpful idiots, right? Meaning that they have no idea that they're actually helping the bad actor. They think they're just doing their job, or they're being nice, or whatever it is that they're doing. And that's who gets used, right? And so you hear about this with things like phishing scams. Bad actor calls, I, you know, oh, I got locked out of my account. Can you give me my password? But they're really a hacker that's sitting in some foreign country somewhere, right? And the person, being a helpful idiot, doesn't know they're doing anything wrong, gives them their password. So when we looked at whether or not there were sort of people within the city that may have been assisting Carl Alameda unwittingly, we did not find that. I mean, what we found was frankly, there just weren't enough people, and there was a lot of turnovers. There wasn't a ton of consistency, and certain processes were falling through in the cracks. And one of those, I'll just give you an example, was called bank reconciliations, right? You want to make sure that your bank account is reconciling to what you're recording in your general ledger, and that wasn't being done because it's a process that has to be done really regularly, and there was no one to do it, right? We understand that's been rectified since then, but that was something that we noted. Digital evidence prevents, so when we look at evidence, that's a big one. Because if something does happen, you want to be able to go back and see what happened, when it happened, who did it, and understand like all the details around it. You can't do that if evidence wasn't preserved. And so going back again to the Office 365, only having a seven-day retention period for those logs, that digital evidence was then gone. Another example of that is when Mr. Alameda left the city. He obviously left before anyone knew what he had done. So he had his phone with him, and his laptop with him. He had some large bag full of something that no one knows, right? And he took all of those things home with him. He did eventually return the digital devices, the phone initially, and then later the laptop. But it was some time later, I mean, weeks later, that he returned the laptop. So he had all of that time. Had he wanted to do something bad, he could have. So digital and physical evidence prevent, evidence preservation is really important. Those were weaknesses that we noted. Again, we understand that all of these things are since being rectified. Any questions before I just sort of move on to our recommendations?
Yeah, I do have a question, if I could. So you've mentioned or stated a number of times that you understand that these things are being rectified. How do you understand that? Have you seen the systems being put into place, or have you been told they're in place, or?
I have been, it has been represented to me by various individuals at the city that they are either in process or that they are being established, meaning that they haven't actually been implemented yet, but the process to implement them has begun.
But you haven't investigated whether or not that's the case?
We have not. And I imagine those things will probably take some time. So, you know, months, maybe even longer.
Okay, thank you.
So our observations and recommendations sort of fall into a number of buckets. We talked a little bit about counts payable, and for the non-sort of people that deal with accounting in the room, essentially that means money that you're paying out, right? Money that you owe to other parties. Again, this is an easy way for people to have unauthorized expenses with city money. So the city operates on what we call a demand basis. So some places operate on a purchase order basis, meaning that you can't pay money out unless there is already an approved purchase order in advance of whatever good or service that has been approved by the appropriate levels of authority for whatever amount that it is. And then, once the actual service or good is rendered, then you get the invoice. You match it with the purchase order, the name, the amount, the service, the good. It all matches. It's already been approved. It's within budget. Go forth and pay. The city doesn't do that. They operate on, or at least up until this point. We know that this one is also being implemented, and it actually started to be implemented before we began. They, but the way that they were operating was on a demand basis. Essentially, the department would spend money on X, Y, or Z, or purchase some good. That expense would then be submitted to finance to be paid. And there would be approvals on that, right? The various levels of individuals within the city would have to approve it based upon the threshold. But there was no pre-approval process that is really a fail-safe, right? It's just one extra step that makes it more difficult for someone to submit fake vendor invoices, right? Because now they have to go through this whole purchase order process. So we recommended that that was something that the city could implement. Budget management sort of ties into that. We understood that there are budgets, and there are line items for budgets, but then these expenses would be incurred, and they didn't necessarily match up specifically with with line items in the budget. And then there was no checking by finance whether or not the budget, the expense was within budget or whether the department was within budget. And that was left to the department to do, again, because of understaffing and because of this like high turnover, right? We recommended that that function come back to finance and that there be some sort of checks and balances to ensure that the budget is being adhered to and that they're not exceeding that budget. Record keeping, again, there was a lot of paper processes at the city. I mean, that one's going to be a hard one to overcome. Digitizing is, is a, is a haul. It's a big lift. But it is going to make the process in the city not just easier and the workflows easier, right? You don't have to bring paper to and from all these places and file paper in big cabinets. But it's going to make it a whole lot easier to audit whether or not these things are happening. And if something goes wrong or something gets lost, you have a digital copy of it. So that was one thing that we recommended. Vendor management, which I spoke about, we strongly recommend that there be vendor due diligence done in advance. And that what we call like vendor aging. So when you go through your vendor master list, if there are vendors that are no longer servicing the city, that you remove them from the master lists. Because that's a really easy way for someone to go, oh, and this guy hasn't sent an invoice for a really long time, but they're already an approved vendor. So let's just create one with their logo on it, submit it and have it paid, right? They already have everything set up. We'll just change where the direct deposit is supposed to go or the ACH or whatever it might be. So we recommended that vendor management be, be looked at. Physical security, right? So generally, the way cities work, I mean, they have checks, right? Most cities still write checks. That means they have check stock, right? And they have certain items within their finance department, not to get too specific, that create checks that get paid by the city. Those things need to be secured in an appropriate fashion. And so we made some suggestions on how they could improve that security. We found no evidence that that was a vulnerability that had been sabotaged in any way. However, it could be, and so we recommended that when we saw it. Accounts receivable, again, this is money coming into the city. So this is what Mr. Alameda is alleged to have done at La Cañada, where he diverted funds that were meant for the city. For example, in, in the city of Ojai, if someone signs up for a rec class and they pay 25 bucks, it's in cash. Recreation collects all that money. At the end of the day, they bring it to finance with a log. Finance ensures that the log matches the amount that they're giving them. And then it eventually gets deposited in the bank. But what's not happening is sort of this check imbalance. What they don't know is whether or not Recreation actually brought them all the cash that they took in, right? Because there's only one person that's doing that. What they also don't know is whether or not the person that took it to the bank, took all of it to the bank because there's no bank reconciliations, right? And so those are two bookends that could be improved to strengthen this process and make sure that someone's not putting 20 bucks in their pocket, right? And no one would be the wiser. Mail receipt and distribution, again, when people pay the city, they still do pay by check through mail at times. And those checks could very easily be diverted if there's not a division of responsibilities and how mail is received and distributed. So mail comes to the city, that there be more than one person that sits down, they log it. If it's a check, right, that that'd be immediately logged. And then there'd be a division of responsibilities to take that to finance, right? Different people doing different things so that it's a lot less likely that you have six people colluding to steal a check, you know, as opposed to one bad actor that can do that. Again, only accounts receivable. We recommended that they take a look at AR aging and what AR aging is essentially when you're expecting revenue and you were expecting it at a certain time and it hasn't come, right? So let's say that, this could be like with a grant. Let's say you expected grant funding to come in. And it always comes in in March of every year. And it's now April and you haven't received it yet. Well, the only way you know that, I mean, especially in a city that has kind of a lot of moving parts, right? Is if you have an AR aging report, meaning that, wait a minute, this was supposed to come in. So you know to reach out and say, hey, did you guys make this payment? Because what if someone stole it through the mail? What if it did arrive here and someone diverted it? You wouldn't really know that unless you were looking at your AR aging reports. So we recommended that that be implemented as well. Employee management, again, we didn't identify any issues with this, but this is a relatively common scheme where what we call ghost employees or even former employees that haven't been completely, you know, put off of the record keeping of the city are still receiving money for one thing or another, whether it's payroll or expense reimbursements or whatever it might be. And doing a really sort of high, good hygiene when it comes to employee management, making sure that when people are terminated from the city, they're not only separated from all of their digital access and physical access, but they're also separated from any kind of financial access, meaning that no more payments are going to go to these people. There's another rarely similar scheme where people can divert money. That is, let's say I'm an employee here, I normally get direct deposit. And someone says they're me. They tell you that the direct deposit information has changed. I changed banks. And now I'm at Wells Fargo and this is my new account number. Well, what if that's not me? I mean, especially in the day of AI, this would be pretty easy to do, right? And so we recommended that anytime there be a change in something like an address, a phone number, a bank account, anything like that, that there be a second level process to ensure that that was indeed the employee and not some third party. Grant management, you know, the city gets a lot of grants. Making sure that those are being tracked properly, both the revenue and the expenses in one place that can be easily reconciled. Positive pay, the city did have positive pay. Essentially what positive pay is when the city writes checks, right? If that check doesn't match, then the bank won't deposit it, right? The city had it, but they only had it for the amount of the check. So let's say there's a check written to Sharina Body. It's for $17,431. If the check was, I, let's say I changed that and I made it 27 or 117 because I'm greedy. And I just put a little one in front of it, trying to deposit it, you know, through a mobile app. It won't get deposited because you have positive pay for the amount of the check. And that's not the right amount. However, we found that what they didn't have was positive pay for the payee. Meaning that, so if I changed the payee on the check, but I kept the amount the same, the city would not be notified. So again, that's been rectified. We understand that that has been added. Claims process, this was what Mr. Alameda is alleged to have done when he was at La Cañada. So we found that in the city of Ojai, that if there was property damage, some sort of city property damage by a third party, that there was in fact incident reports being taken, but they were inconsistently being sent to the city. And they were inconsistently reporting who that responsible third party was. Sometimes they were reporting it, but really only for the purpose of making the repairs. And then there was no recuperation effort happening, right? So public works would go out, they would fix the stop sign. They would put in the time and the effort and the materials to do that. But then the actual recuperation wasn't happening on the backend, right? So something that he, you know, a vulnerability that he exposed certainly at La Cañada. We have no reason to believe that he did that here, but he certainly could have, given that there was not a robust process. Hiring processes, so as you probably have questioned, how did Mr. Alameda get hired when he had been under investigation by the city of La Cañada for the better part of a year? Almost an entire year, in fact. The city did in fact do a reference check for his prior employment, but the individual that was listed as the reference for that prior employment was a former La Cañada employee, right? And so they spoke to that person who I'm sure gave Mr. Alameda a glowing review. But they didn't actually speak with a current employee. And so, you know, we usually recommend that you don't just take the applicant's list of references, that you do some independent checking of who you're speaking with. Make sure you're speaking with current employees, people who were in fact supervisors and people who are in fact still at the city. Whether or not La Cañada in fact would have told you all what was going on, that, that remains to be seen. May or may not, but you're certainly not going to tell you if you're not talking to them, so. Employee separation, we kind of talked about this already. When employee separates, make sure that they're separated from digital, physical and financial. And then digital security, again, we've talked about this. Making sure that the license is upgraded so that we're having at least 180 days of logs. And making sure that for digital assets that belong to the city, like laptops, cell phones, things like that, that there's a means by which you can remotely lock them down. So in the event someone leaves, before you know that they're getting fired and they have it with them, you can lock it down remotely. That would have been really helpful here. So that is really the extent of the findings. I'm happy to take any other questions that you all might have.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I actually do have a question. This is on page 11 or I think it's the first page of observations.
And recommendations under budget management. And this is just a clarifying question. For your recommendation, or as noted previously, Cole recommends the city move to a PO requisition process. I certainly understand that. Implement a more robust budget to actually review at a regular cadence. What does a more robust, what would a more robust budget look like? What does that actually?
Yeah, so I'll clarify, budget to actual means that you're, here is your budget that's been approved, right? We, this is the budget we're operating on. Here are your actual expenditures. Are the two aligning? And if they're not, what's the variance?
Okay, so the reconciliation happen more frequently?
Essentially a reconciliation, yeah.
Right, okay, thank you.
On the hiring part, I guess I would say, I think you listed it there. That HR is listed, if I understand correctly, we did not have a standalone HR function in the city at that time.
That's right, HR. My understanding is that person was brought on after Mr. Alameda had been hired.
Correct, okay. Thanks, please.
I actually have a question for staff. You know, this is very thorough and I appreciate knowing all the ways in which we could function better as a city and create stopgaps that we don't have to have these questions coming up in the future. I know that we have voted over the last couple of years since you came on for updating our processes, bringing all of our accounting into the digital age, hiring an entire new financial staff. What, what kinds of policy considerations do we need to put into place moving forward based on the recommendations or the findings here?
So there are multiple and they've been presented to you but here by Ms. Abadi. And what we would like to do is we'd like to use Ms. Billings, now that she is no longer the interim finance director. And in fact, we've already started this effort to go through and to implement all the findings, basically to oversee, implement that, working independently with. Because as you, as you can tell, it doesn't just impact the finance department. It impacts many departments, including my office. And we'd be happy to give you a status update on that as we, as we move along. But we've already started.
I have a quick follow-up question. So do we have, we have a contract with Ms. Billings to do this?
She is, yes, she is a Calpers, she doesn't have a specific contract for that, but we have her on staff as a Calpers retired and new attendant and she is able to do that.
Okay. So she, she was the finance director.
She was the interim finance director.
She was interim finance director. We now have a finance director. So we don't have an interim finance director. So I mean, I, I think there should be clarification on how that staffing is actually happening, just, just because.
So she, she, the way, the way it happens.
We don't have to do it now, but you can if you want.
Sure, I can, I can, I can explain it. So as a Calpers retired and new attendant, you're only afforded a certain number of hours each calendar year. And you have to track that and you have to submit that to Calpers and, and it's finite. So, and, and you can only perform certain functions that the city has. So in other words, you can't be brought in for something that, that, that never existed or, or is not logical. So she's doing a special project for us in the finance department. And I think that's, I can't remember the title we gave her, but it's something like, remember the title we were using at this point? Yes. Which is, which is a Calpers allowed title because that's exactly what she's doing. She's working on a special project for us.
So basically, you can come in, and I, I'm just curious. You can come in, you're interim city, you're an interim finance director and you hit your limit of the time that you can be that, but then you can be something else?
You, it, it renews each calendar year.
No, I understand that. But basically, you can just have another title and continue with?
Yes.
And it doesn't, it doesn't impact the, a number of hours total that you can use. In other words, it's not a total number of hours. It's like, well, you can do this amount of hours.
So in other words, you're saying, you, this, could this go on for 10 years if the work was out there?
Exactly.
Conceivably, yes, although you are under very strict Calpers audits and it's all reviewed. And I suspect if you had somebody for that period of time, Calpers would probably object to that because what, what the rules require.
Right, 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 because.
No, but I can tell you, what the rules require is you can't be taking the place of another permanent employee with, with a retired and new attendant. So something like an interim finance director, that's allowed because you're bridging a gap. Something like a special project where there's a thing that you're working on and it's got a beginning and an end, that's allowed. But what's not allowed is having somebody just always be here as like the Calpers new attendant retired accountant.
No, no, I understand that. It's just, so basically, we were expanding the finance department with a finance, a finance director level. But we did not, the council did not know that. That's all, that's, that's my question, really.
No, I would, I would not characterize it as such.
Okay, well, we don't have to characterize it either way, but it was just to know that.
I, I look at it that we're, you know, we're.
I understand, yeah, thank you.
I guess my, it's, it's not the same question, but how far apart are we from our current state to our desired state?
I'd say we're at least a year away, maybe more. I mean, this did not happen overnight. This has been going on for decades. And this is one of the challenges with Ojai, and I've made council aware of this and the public too. This is a land of process improvement. And this is, you know, the land where there's a lot of handshake deals and this is the way we've always done it and this is our practice. But it doesn't always mean it was a best practice. And so we're slowly, methodically trying to professionalize.
You're just waiting for more questions.
If there are any other questions, otherwise I will take my leave.
This does seem, it's very illuminating.
Yeah, it was great. My next question, of course, is going to be, how does this mesh with the operational and policy assessment study report that we're going to get next? So meshing it for us as we go would be super wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just because we haven't seen these documents before, so thank you.
Sure.
Thanks.
Sure, it's a good question. Thank you so much. Well, good evening, council, manager, nice to see you. Nice to be here. My name is Brad Rockbrand. I am the partner in charge of Government Advisory Services at Hyde Bailey. And we were engaged to perform an operation on policy assessment back in February. And we issued a report to that in August. And I am here to give you an update of the status of those items, most of which align with the previous report to give you kind of some more meat to those bones in terms of what's been done, both by city staff and by consultants at Hyde Bailey to help kind of augment those processes to get them sped up and get them into place. So as I said, we were hired in early 2000, in early 2024 to do this assessment. The report really focused on these eight key areas. It was a high level assessment. There are kind of three tiers of assessments that one can do at a city in a finance department. You could do obviously a citywide, you could do a departmental. We were focusing mostly on the finance one. And it was really just what's going on, how's it going? What are you doing? What are you not doing? What should you be doing? Let's align those things with best practices. And really, the purpose of the assessment was to illuminate where things needed to happen and then kind of let the city loose deciding on what they wanted to do about it at that time. So those areas were staff, routine accounting, payroll, technology use, budgeting and so on. That assessment was then turned over to the current engagement team in November of 24. And a majority of those folks who you'll see on the next slide all have experience in the roles of finance directors or budget administrator, budget analysts or former accounting managers for large, medium and small organizations within cities in California. So they've sat in the seat, they know what to do, they've gone through these processes, they know what to look for, they know how to implement the recommendations and the illuminated areas. And so we worked kind of side by side with city staff to determine what was the best use of their time, what was the best use of our time? How could we augment those things most effectively and efficiently? We looked at some of the low hanging fruit. What can we do easily to make the most impact quickly? No worries, no worries.
No one ever calls me.
So we kind of divided the team into kind of three areas. We had kind of an accounting arm, financial management arm and a technology. And as you heard earlier, a lot of these processes and procedures were within the accounting system or not within the accounting system. So one of the first things we did was we brought in our technology, senior technology advisor to help consult on what the system was capable of. Liaison between the vendor of the software and the city to be able to help navigate the processes, the workflows, the approvals, one of which was the PO, to your question about purchase orders and how those processes work to improve the approval process through which these things can kind of work now. through which these things can kind of work naturally in flow, so there is an approval. On the accounting side, we were working through the variety of the, the bank reconciliations that had been brought to your attention, payroll matters, some of the more debits and credits areas. And then on the financial management side, we were looking at policies and procedures. So the results and kind of status of the recommendations of the report that was issued in August are here, broken down by the eight kind of categories that we presented upfront. And here's kind of where we stand and I'll just segue a little bit to say that the, that's color coordinated because as we issue reports, a lot of times we'll say, okay, green, you're in good shape. Yellow, kind of like a stoplight, yellow, you're in okay shape, but you should probably pay attention to it. Orange, a little less red, need to deal with it now. I'm happy to report there are not, there's nothing in red or even orange at this point, we're all in yellow and gray. So things are in process, things are either in process or complete, I'm happy to report. But staffing and accounting, Ida Bailey is assisting with the accounting backlog, so we're getting things caught up with the assistance and collaboration with city staff. The city now prepares an annual comprehensive financial report, which is a heavy lift. It, it requires a lot of good data, the general ledger system has to be in good shape in order to do that. And so to be able to do that means that the other things are already working better than they were. And as you know, most of the vacant city positions have been filled in that capacity. The payroll, four fifty-seven reporting process has been modified. As you can see, it's in green, so it has been completed, it's good. Positive pay process has been revamped. Previous report indicated that that was going to be a positive thing, not to be redundant in the word, but that having the positive pay gives kind of a two sided comparison. You present it to the bank, they present the check to you, they match them up or they won't clear it. Personnel action form process has been modified. And then, as you know, the timekeeping software has been identified, but it's still in process. Technology use, again, a slower initiative, but that is almost always the case with changes in software and processes. It takes time, as has been alluded to. But we're assisting with the evaluation and implementation of system upgrades and the new functionality. AP, purchase orders, as we've heard, centralized invoicing, purchase order models of the ERP has been implemented. And staff is in training right now, in progress of training on that new process and that new system. Cash receipts and banking has been fully implemented. So as you can see, bank reconciliations have been moved in house now that the department is fully staffed. Stale dated checks reviewed and the policy around stale dated checks has been implemented. So again, referencing the prior report, coming together with those things. When you have stale dated checks, but nobody's looking at it, you might have old employees, you might have old vendors, you're looking at those things. When you have a policy and an attached procedure to review those things, whether it's quarterly, annually, whatever the period that policy dictates, then you're getting a more, a more regular opportunity to check to ensure that those things can't happen. So that has been implemented, banking has been centralized. As was mentioned in the previous report, grant administration is a big one, it's not unique to this city. My department consults with over a thousand cities all over the country. And grant administration is probably one of the most top five complicated things that people do because it's decentralized for the most part. Public Works will apply for a grant and not tell finance for six months until a check shows up and then they say, where did this come from? Oh, we've been spending money against that for six months, oh, I didn't know about that. So the good news is that we've begun to identify those things. We're looking at grant administration, the policy that Ida Bailey drafted on behalf of the city. We worked with them in terms of what the processes needed to be in order to make those, those, the accounting and those things cleaner. Ida Bailey has also assisted with what's called the CIFA preparation, which is your schedule of expenditures of federal awards, which is a required audit requirement if you get more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year and spend it. You have to report those things, what programs they're in, there's very detailed compliance requirements that go along with those things. We have put that into place, which is part of the act for, was just to be able to be issued. And then in the yellow, under grant administration, the implementation of the revised practices and approved data management process is still in place, or excuse me, is still in process. Budgeting, as we've talked about, it's in process. The consultant assisting with the city with the revised budget, format, what that's going to look like, more detail, more general ledger line items. You know, I like to use a lot of analogies when I present technical topics, I use the, the envelope, cash envelopes for, you know, home budgets, you know, you have your grocery bill, your car payment bill, those types of things. The more detail you have in those things, the better off you can do in your budget to actual analysis. Because if you just say, I'm going to spend a thousand dollars on electricity, but you don't know what vendor you're going to pay that electricity to, then it could be going to anybody and that kind of conflicts with the vendor management and the overall point of an analytical review in that regard. Finally, with credit card management, this one has always also been fully implemented. So the credit card expense report process has been revised, the fuel car program has been implemented. So those are all good news items in terms of a status report from the operational assessment that was, that was reported in August. One of the things that we look at in policy is we do a policy gap analysis. So a city of this size should have X, Y and Z policies in place. We come in and say, do you have them? We kind of do this initial pass at it, do you have it, yes or no? If you don't, you need it, if you do, is it robust enough to be effective with your current set of circumstances? So we looked at several policy gaps identified during the, the operational assessment. And the city requested that we complete a more detailed gap analysis and look for any opportunities for improvements to the city's financial policies. This report was issued in February of this year, identifying recommended changes to the existing city policies and ones that may not have been in place at that time. The report assessed twenty-six areas of policy and procedures that the city would consider. Seven of these areas were assessed as requiring modifications to align with best practices are, and have either been revised and implemented or are in process of being revised to be implemented. I'm happy to also report that nineteen of those twenty-six areas were assessed as adequate as they were with either no or minor areas for possible enhancements. So it, it speaks to the city's preparedness in policy and procedure at that time. That there weren't just gaping holes in, which is good. City staff then identified which policies could be drafted or revised in house and which policy they wanted Ida Bailey to prepare in collaboration. So those things are working in tandem at this time and we'll be continuing to update those policies and procedures with the help of the city. So as I said, green, yellow, orange, no red, policy gap analysis recommendation. Here are the eight policies that we looked at and the eight policy categories I should qualify. So budget administration has been implemented by city staff, cash management, Ida Bailey. You can read all those, I won't read them to you unless you have any questions. But they're all in progress, all being looked at, have been identified through the gap analysis. I probably should have started with the bottom line because this is a good report, but you know, save the best for last, I guess. But I, I am really happy to report that we've had a very good relationship with the city over the last, you know, eighteen to twenty-four months. We very much enjoyed working with city staff, they've been very complimentary, they've been very helpful. It's clear that the city wants to make improvements and get into the, the right processes, the right procedures, doing the right things. They're asking the right questions. A majority of these recommendations have been implemented to date, so we're happy about that. Finance department staff, obviously you know where we're at and where the, the holes have been filled at this point in terms of having adequate staffing for proper internal controls, proper processes, proper workflows, the use of tech, city technology in the finance department. These will have long lasting benefits to the efficiency, the use of data, decision making, budget to actual analysis, being able to kind of, you know, financial forecast out in the future and really kind of make more informed decisions, both at the operational level and at the policy level. The city's in process, policy and procedures library also well on its way to being comprehensive. So again, just very much appreciate the city's collaboration over the eight, last eighteen months and be happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you. That made me feel happy to hear. Any questions? I'm hearing you say there's nothing that you have elaborate concerns about, that everything is moving in the right direction.
That is correct, yeah, and in tandem with the previous report. I was, I was also happy to hear that a lot of our, what we're doing, you know, that they came in and looked and kind of shined a light on those areas. My staff has been working in tandem with city staff to improve those illuminations and the things that came out of those illuminations. And so it too makes me happy to see that those, those two reports are kind of in line, what they found and what's been happening, what the city's response to those things has been over the last six to eight months is all going in the right direction.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, wow, wonderful. All right. We have one more item, correct?
Yes. So lastly, the city has submitted its investment policy to California Municipal Treasurers Association, CMTA, for the investment policy certification program. This certification recognizes that CMTA has validated that the city's investment policy adheres to the state government code and program requirements that are deemed to be best practices. So the city has been awarded this certification and received comments that the policy is very well written and it would be a model policy. So tonight we have Don Patterson, past CMTA president, here to present the award to the city.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. First of all, as Brenda mentioned, I'm Don Patterson, a former past president of CMTA. CMTA's mission is to lead and promote enhancing the fiduciary responsibility and integrity of individuals responsible for public funds. And we do that through a series of educational and certification programs, one of which is the investment certification program, which was developed in conjunction with the state treasurer's office. And basically the investment policy certification program looks at investment policies and making sure they implement best practices that include how you invest funds, who manages funds, separation of duties, things like that. And I'm pleased to announce that the city of Ojai received the certification and they are actually one of the only evaluations I've seen that receive a hundred percent from all three evaluators. But I don't think I've ever seen that before, so congratulations on that. And they are also one of five model debt policies on the CMTA website. So they've done a really great job in developing and drafting the investment policy and we've ensured it meets best practices and we are very honored to present this certificate to whoever.
Ms. Cho, please.
Yes, wonderful.
This looks like a photo opportunity.
Do you mind, Mr. Montgomery?
Christie should go up as well.
Yes, we should get Ms. Billings in the chair as well. I know, gotta add some bright color.
Thank you. That's a very nice bookend to that report, thank you so much, everybody. So we will adjourn this special portion of the session, Mr. Montgomery, you need a moment?
Yes, just give me a moment as we do some technical changeover.
Okay.
And I will notify you when we're ready to start.
Okay.